Down the corner there.
Where you guys lived?
Yeah, right there next to the parking lot. It was the older couple.
Yeah. Oh, the Johnsons.
Yeah.
Not Bruce, what's his name? Mike bought it. Mike Burrows.
Oh, did he?
Yeah, he's living there now.
Well, there you go. See, I don't even know that.
That's where.
Yeah, my son.
Oh, you lived in the basement?
My son, my son and his wife.
Oh, right now?
Yeah.
Oh. I heard it was a pretty good. I've never been in there, but I heard it's a pretty good apartment down there.
Yeah.
This is.
At six P M. Let's go ahead and call to order our Riverdale City Council meeting for Tuesday, September seventeenth, twenty twenty four, because at the record show that all members of the city council are present. With Council Arnold joining us. Via telephone. We also have members of the city staff here with us tonight. We have asked Counselor Hawes to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
All rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Hawes. All offer our invocation tonight. Our Father in heaven, as we gather here tonight for this city council meeting, we are grateful for the beautiful and wonderful city that we live in. We're grateful for many blessings that we enjoy and and for the freedoms that we enjoy to gather together and to govern ourselves. We're grateful for the wonderful city employees that we have to help keep us safe and to keep our city functioning well. And we ask a blessing upon them at this time that they'll be watched over and protected, that they might perform to the best of their duties and they might go home each night at the end of their shifts, safe and we ask that thou would help us as we make decisions as a council, that we might do those things that thou would have us do that will be pleasing unto thee, that will be most beneficial to our residents, that we might have thy spirit to guide us and that we will work together well and come to consensus with each other. We are, we also ask a blessing upon our military and and those that are protecting us abroad and ask thou would watch over and protect them as well. And we offer this prayer in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
All right. We will open it to public comment. But seeing none, we will move on to presentations and reports. Number one, the mayor's report. So we had the Central Weber Sewer District meeting last night. And we, Mr. Cooper was on the agenda to try and get our RDA expanded. And he did a great job presenting to them. That RDA was created in two thousand and five and since then, the sewer district has put into place some guiding principles that they would not participate for over twelve years or over fifty percent in an RDA. And Mr. Cooper was asking for twenty year participation at eighty percent. And he had to make the case that our, our particular project should be grandfathered in because it was created before. And it was a, it was a pretty, well, it was very divided. And the, the vote came down and we, we, well, first there was a motion made to deny us and that failed by one vote. And then there was a motion made to approve us and that passed by one vote. And it's kind of weird out there because Ogden City's members aren't like counted double or triple. They're very heavily weighted and they, they carried the vote for us, which is pretty interesting, considering Mr. Cooper was the one making the plea. So I thought that was, that was kind of neat that they supported us. The terrorists did not support us. South Ogden did. I won't go through each one, but that was kind of interesting as well.
Is that public record?
Yeah. Yeah. And anyway, it was, it was good to get that done. And so there's still, it might be another hurdle with it, but he did a great job and he got one of those out of the way. And so it was, it was a pretty impassioned plea that he made for him and he did a great job on his presentation. Just by way of information, you all know that Chief Sholly has moved on and we have appointed Captain Hennessy as the interim chief. And he's accepted that position and so we will start deciding how to move forward with that. And then the last thing is the Chuck E. Cheese grand opening. Hopefully you all got the, the notice that it is Thursday night from five to seven. It looks like they're excited to have us come and they've got some neat things planned for us. So hopefully we can all attend. I'm, I'm going to have to be there just for a brief time because I have something else to get to, but I'll be there right at five. So that should be kind of fun. I know a lot of people were anticipating that. I don't have anything else for this meeting, so the next thing is the city administration report. Mr. Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. We, we did have a little bit of a weird agenda tonight. If you can see, these are not normally things we, we deal with, but as of Thursday, I had nothing for the agenda again, which would mean we would have canceled two meetings in a row. So some of these have been lingering back there and that's why I brought them forward now just to get them out of the way. They, we, they need to be dealt with. So that's and it gives us a good time to talk about if we need to tonight. But anyway, as far as our staffing reports, they're all in your packet. Do you have any questions on any of those, anything that might have been in there? That was addressed and covered in there? Pretty standard as far as that procedure goes. September anniversaries, we actually had two who were on their anniversary years, one of which is here and one of which is not, but both of those fall under Rich's department out in community services. So let's go ahead and take Betty first and we'll get her out of here. Rich, you want to come forward? I'll give both of those to Rich and he can take them, but Betty's here tonight for hers.
I guess time really flies. Betty is celebrating ten years with the city. I remember when I was brand new and we were looking for a clerk. She was the first clerk that I hired. And she has been great. One of the things that, that really impressed me in her interview and it's stayed true is she really loves our community. She really loves people and she treats them really well. Betty is, she, she typically works our afternoon shifts at the community center. But anytime anybody needs time off or we need to cover shifts, Betty is there all different times of the day. And she's just great to, to help out. She's a great part of the team and we really appreciate her. So like to invite her up and, and get her certificate and maybe a picture with the mayor.
May I remind us how many years?
It's ten, ten years.
As someone who, who patronizes the, the community center, it's always nice. She's always with a smile and a big hello every, every time I come in and anybody comes in.
She's great. She's great with patrons. She's great with the employees. She's everybody's best friend. There you go, Betty.
Thank you.
I guess Mayor probably needs to give that to her. I'm sorry. We probably did that a little backwards, but let's, let's get a picture.
Well, congratulations. That's quite an honor and everything that was said is correct. So, um, so yeah, we'll, we'll get a picture. And I, 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 after what Counselor Stevens said, she's, and she is there all different times. I know she has her set time, but I, anyway, I've talked to her at all different times.
Whenever we need her.
It's as pleasant as can be. It never seems to be bugged or annoying to be there or whether it's six o'clock in the morning or nine o'clock in the night. And she helps with all the things we do. Yeah. So anyway, it's great to have you, Betty. I hope we have a lot more years with you. So. Oh, do you want to give a speech, Betty, or? Okay. Don't sneak away.
And last, but certainly not least, Karen Dilly, who is not here tonight, but she's selling, celebrating twenty-five years. So and Karen's much like Betty. I know there's been times when I've had to go up there. There was one night, for example, it was the band was trying to get in there. The building was locked and I could get into the door, but I couldn't get any further than that. And we made a couple of phone calls. Karen came right over, let us in and things worked out great. Just two rocks, quite honestly. Karen could probably run the city at this point. She's been here long enough. So congratulations to both of them and Rich will let them know that we appreciate them and get her, her certificate as well. All right. As far as staffing authorizations, the only thing that I would mention on that is we did hire another firefighter. Week ago or two weeks ago, it's been within the last two weeks. Came from Ogden City. He's a, not a seasoned veteran, but he's got a few years under his belt. So probably a pretty good pickup for us. So that again will help in their numbers. And the only things I would say, we don't have it on there. It would be part of this is where it is a city administrator's report is the community development report. Again, we have the Chuck E. Cheese, which the mayor mentioned. I think we've got another one too that you've all received emails on.
Oh, Safe Flight, yeah.
Which one was it?
Safe Flight, it's in October.
Oh, that's right. That's right. So we have both of those on the agenda coming up and the smoked taco.
Yeah.
We're finally seeing some progress on it. Brandon went over there the other day. He's taking pictures in the window.
Because I kind of got on him. I said, hey, those signs, I want them down. They're ratty. They're old. There's no progress. Get those banners down. And he called me the next day, said, hey, they're starting construction. It's going to open and okay.
See stuff in there. And I spoke with Dee Hanson last week and Dee thought they'd already pretty much moved in and they pulled permits and everything. So I don't know what's going on, but it's getting, it's, we're finally seeing some movement. So that's all good news. And that's all I had, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. We'll now move on to consent items. Number one, consideration to approve the meeting minutes from the August twentieth, twenty twenty four council work session and council meeting. Any question or corrections or changes for those minutes? Seeing none, a motion to approve would be in order.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'll move to approve the consent items as listed in the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
All right. Any opposed? And you got a yes on there, Counsel Arnold, right?
Yes, sir.
You bet. All right. Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll move on to the action items. Number one.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Stevens.
Yeah, you've didn't go over the department reports or didn't offer it.
I did say that they were all in your packet. If you had questions.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
We can go back, no problem.
The department reports that we ask us about.
All the assignments, okay.
It's not on there. But anyway.
Okay.
Can I just take?
Oh, yes, please, please.
Okay.
Well, yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay.
It's part of your mayor, mayor's report, so we can just include it in that.
It goes under the mayor's report tonight.
All right. Close enough. Anyway, we, we had a little bit of a mosquito invasion that I was contacted on quite a bit and, and I'm happy to, to talk to him because and I thought I'd put it in this meeting so everybody knows what, what happened. There's it was a little bit of a mini invasion. It was kind of a perfect storm of there's a variety of mosquitoes called the dorcella or dorcellus and it typically stays in the western part of the county and they brood in the, in bird refuge area, the, the, all up and down Farmington Bay Bird Refuge, the, in Box Elder. You know, so it's very prominent, but there was kind of a perfect storm where they there was a big hatching and then the winds blew them east. And so, and it wasn't just Riverdale because it was all the way from North Salt Lake to Brigham City that there was this invasion. Now the dorcellus is a little different variety. It's very aggressive. It comes out during the day, daylight hours, which typically they're in the morning and the evening. But this particular variety is very blood thirsty and they will bite all day. The, the heat doesn't bother them because of temperatures weren't real high. But it was, they were very aggressive and they were everywhere. Now on the good part, they do not carry the West Nile virus, that particular species. Now they did have somebody get come down with the West Nile virus from Mary Sladeville area. He was young. He was hospitalized. He'd been released and, and but that's the first one this season. But that one that was, I'm sorry, the dorcellus that did come up was schools getting underway and people in the park who use the track and people in the, using the down on the pathway and different things were really bothered by the mosquitoes. And so calls weren't put in now. The fogging machine is the most prominent way to get rid of them. And so and you can't, you have to do those early in the morning or late at dusk because when they fog, it, it's like this big plume that's coming as the truck drives through the neighborhoods. Maybe you've seen them. I personally used to chase them on my bicycle when I was little, but, and I think probably from time to time, but things are just this, they're just not the same since they got rid of DDT. But, but anyway. But they were, they were going out every day. Now the reason they have to do it early and late is because it'll kill the bees. And so typically the bees will go in at dusk and, and so they won't, aren't effective, but it was, they were doing it. Davis mosquito baitment, Box Elder mosquito bait. Everybody was, I mean, it was major overtime with the trucks out driving neighborhoods. And so once we were notified, they, they hit Riverdale pretty good and they've come back through again, but this particular variety now is not as strong. So as the temperatures dip, this one will go first, the dorcellus that is, that bites all the time. I mean, they, they don't come out in the morning or evening. They are all day. They are biting. Now, the good thing is, is come January, they'll be gone. Okay. As the temperatures dip, but that was not a unique to Riverdale. It was not the wet, wetland area. It was everywhere. Just so you know, it, I, I think it made, brought up some attention on Facebook page and different things. And I got some calls and, and that's fine. I'm, you know, can I pull some strings? I can complain to the mosquito baitment, but they have their routes and they, I mean, they had everybody out morning and night fogging. Now, the only thing about fogging that's, that can be a bit of a problem is they have to call ahead because it's not uncommon for people to call in, hey, there's a fire somewhere. There's smoke all over because it's a thick, kind of a misty and it just sits. And that's what will kill the mosquitoes. Anyway, that's all.
Thank you, Counsel Stevens. I'm glad you brought that up because there were complaints on the citizen page.
Yes.
And I, I encouraged him to contact you. I just said you're the representative on the mosquito board.
I'm happy to talk to him.
And I actually think I sent a text or an email. And did you get it?
Yes.
Okay, good. Anyway, the very next day I heard the truck going by. It has a very distinct sound.
Yes.
And I, I thought that was incredible, to be honest. Because I was like, wow. I mean, I said, hey, Bart, we need some mosquito stuff. And then the next day they're going by.
The school was calling. And because the kids out on the playground and they wouldn't go on the path, I should have maybe gotten in touch with you know, the parks people to maybe drive around in the, really in the late at night.
Yeah.
And kill the ones in the park area because, in the playground area, but they, they went around it.
And they, they're always kind of out at my house, so I don't notice surges too much, I don't think, but apparently this is quite a surge. So that's good.
Well, they, they were biting in the middle of the day, which is unusual.
That is unusual, yeah. Well, thank you. I'm glad you brought that up too. That's good. And we appreciate you serving on that board for us. Okay, so we got through the consigns. And we will now move on to action items. Number one, consideration to approve facility use permit policy for Riverdale Park and facilities. Mr. Taylor, if you'll come up to the mic for us, make sure it's on.
I think it's on.
It's on.
So counsel, before you is a, a draft or proposal of facility use permit structure that we're proposing to put in place. The, a couple of issues that we want to try to address is use of our parks by organized team groups. We're seeing an increased use by a bunch of different groups. It causes a lot of maintenance and wear and tear on the turf and on the grass. A lot of cities have like field use permits and, and things like that in place. Since we don't necessarily have fields, we're trying to kind of tweak it to, to our needs and, and a facility use permit. But the whole goal and the whole purpose behind this is to be able to better know what groups are on and when and where and to maintain the parks in the best way that we can so that they're available for, for public use and that we can keep nice parks and we don't have to continue to the residents don't have to continue to foot the expanse for the additional use that's created by these groups coming in. So this is an attempt to do that. Any questions or feedback that you guys have on the concept as a whole, on the specific facility use permit agreement before you tonight, just really any of it. Be happy to answer.
Yeah, Counsel Hanson.
I like the idea. I know we're on a much smaller scale, but we used to run a pretty big preseason. Like they would bid on when they could come and use it for the big leagues that would come and play in South Jordan. So I know it's really common in other cities to do that to help cover the cost. And so I think a small in between that makes sense for Riverdale makes sense because our residents shouldn't be paying all that maintenance when it's an outside group using it. The only suggestion I had for you besides the format of the definitions section, but it sounded like Steve's going to help you with that is under the definitions section, I guess the concern I would have is sometimes we have Riverdale teams that play in other sports leagues because we don't provide it. Like when I was young, there was no softball league in Riverdale. And so we had a Riverdale team, but we had to go play in like South Ogden. And so maybe if we could add something there where we know it's a Riverdale team for a rec league, and we don't provide the sport in Riverdale, that they also get a free pass, but still have to schedule it. I think that was the only one I saw that might be missing. Because the rest, it talked about cosponsored and sponsored by the city were covered. And so I know it's not really like a cosponsored thing, but because we don't actually provide the service if it's a legitimate Riverdale team and a rec league, I think is different than like one of the competition leagues. But maybe we consider allowing them to schedule the field for free practice.
Yeah, I appreciate that feedback. We can, we can really make this be anything you guys want it to be. So if, if that's a piece of feedback and, and something you guys want to incorporate into this, we can for sure do that.
That's my suggestion. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions, suggestions?
Speaking of that, Annie, just following down those same lines, I do like that one section. It's listed as a definition, but the one that talks about the cosponsorships and stuff. Because we've run into that this year and it, it puts us in an awkward position. Like the farmer's market was an exact same thing. If, if we co-sponsor something like that, that who does it fall under and what do we do? So this can clarify a lot of that. So I really liked that part. I know that Richard put in there. I think we can run with that and kind of, we've had these discussions numerous times. Do we charge them as a special event? Or do we do nothing because it's partially sponsored by the cities? So this will help us in that regard too.
Counsel Stevens.
Okay, I've, I've had kids that, my children who've participated in okay, Pee Wee football, either the Washington Terrace League or the Roy League. And they, you know, practice, play at Romer and, or Sandridge Park. And, and so you know, and there was a lot of Riverdale kids playing up there. Now, I don't know what the arrangement, I think South, or I'm sorry, Washington Terrace sponsors those football leagues. I, I, is that how that works?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we don't sponsor them. But we do have alternatives like flag football and so on and so, but I guess I don't know, is it? Do they ever ask us for help in maintaining some of those costs since there's some, a certain percentage of Riverdale kids who are participating, save Washington Terrace hypothetically?
So the tackle football landscape is, is changing a little bit. But currently it's not an interlocal agreement. It's more just kind of a handshake agreement. Washington Terrace, mainly because they have a facility, a Romer Park where they can put a football field. We, we don't even have a location that can fit a full-size football field. Either at Golden Spike or at Riverdale Park. We don't have a piece of grass that's big enough for a football field. So mainly because they have that facility, they run the tackle football program. The, the most popular league in this area for years and years and years was the WFFL. And according to their rules and their bylaws, if you live in Riverdale, you, you have to play in the terrace. So it's part of the Washington Terrace boundary. And rather than us pitching in costs and, and, and sharing costs that way, we run the flag football program and we allow the terrace residents to come in to the flag football program in Riverdale. So essentially they run tackle football, we run flag football. And that's kind of been the trade-off. Rather than money exchanged hands, that's how we've always done it.
Thank you. I didn't know that.
Any other comments or things you'd like to see in this as Rich tries to kind of come up with the final draft?
It's a good initial draft.
So. Yeah, Counsel Arnold.
I think one of the things that's been a real problem down there, especially Golden Spike Park has been parking. There was, not only was the football team practicing, but they had the, there's like three comp league soccer. I go down on Monday nights. I, I go down there every Monday night. And they, they're practicing, like the whole field is, and the parking and everything is just horrendous. And then it's been bad this summer because of the, I think it's a water project that's working down there. But I, I think that's one of the things that we need to, to balance, like parking, if they can park on the east parking lot type thing. You know, everybody typically goes to the west parking lot. And I mean, it really causes a lot of problems for, you know, public use. So just a thought.
Yeah, yeah, that's great feedback. And, and I'm assuming you would maybe limit how many people could be on the field. Is that what you're thinking, Rich?
Well, what we want to try to do, once again, is, is get a balance. I, I feel like we're a little bit out of whack sometimes, maybe on specific nights or specific parts of the, the year, things like that. So by, by controlling it with this facility use permit, we could issue a set number of permits. Right? And, and then then we could issue permits for certain dates and certain times and we could block out other dates and other times. And so hopefully that would help control the use somewhat and maybe alleviate some of those parking concerns.
Yeah, okay. Anything else? Okay, so it said to approve the facility use permit. Are we, are we wanting him to kind of hammer that out with you a little more?
Yeah, we didn't really, I mean, I put it on there in case we got that far, but I don't know that we're that far yet. So I'd rather have a little bit more time on it. We'll, we'll continue to work on it. And then we'll bring something back that's a little bit more formal and finalized for you to look at. We, we wanted to make sure before we put too much time into it, you're okay with this. So that was kind of the main idea, but it sounds like that's a positive. So we'll keep working on it and we'll have something for you in the near future.
Doesn't need to be tabled. Yeah, Counsel Arnold.
I think one of the things that was brought up earlier that would be very good in this one is to make sure that anybody that has a permit knows that the city can come in and cancel usage at any time. So that, that ought to be in writing in the permit language or whatever. Just, I mean, they, Steve mentioned it before. Making sure that it's on the record and that anybody that gets a permit knows that the city, the city comes in and says, hey, we had heavy rain today. We're, we're closing the park too. That kind of stuff that, that people that get the permit understand it's closed.
Definitely. Very good. Thank you.
Just real quick, maybe I could offer a brief explanation. Obviously you see a permit policy before you guys that we're going to kind of get finalized and, and hopefully get before you for approval. But just what we've talked about internally and as a staff on how to execute is that we would post signs in our park describing our facility use permit requirements. The point of contact would be the community center. The community center would issue the permits. And then groups would be asked or required to have the permits with them when they're out at practice. So that, that, if they were asked to show that by a city staff, whether that be a, a community center employee, a public works employee, police officer or code enforcement officer, we've discussed all those different scenarios that they can produce that permit. And, and so enforcement is, is going to be a little bit tricky. Obviously we're going to have signs up, but if we have a, a group that's consistent, heavy use, that's not complying. When we have this structure in place, then we can just simply go out to the park. When we have this structure in place, then we can just simply go out to the park during that time that they're there and address the issue at that point. So. Logistically, that's not covered in the policy, but that's kind of what we've talked about as a staff of how we're going to roll this out. Once we get a policy approved, so.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number two, update and most recent proposal from Weber Human Services on our contract for senior services. Mr. Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. We beat this to death beforehand. Michelle, you want to pull those up? So that, again, that new software that. Brandon has acquired allows us to go in and highlight certain spots. And we can tell who's using our facility and who's not and how they're coming. That one right there. Is that, is this our facility? Because there's three different ones. Okay, this is so, so this is Riverdale's. So this spans September 1, 23 to, it's a year, August 31st of 24. All those blue areas, it looks better on a computer. It's a little bit harder to see on, on this display there.
Would that plus right there zoom it a little bit?
Those are all people who visited our facility during that year's time. The reddish areas are the high traffic areas. So, and that's kind of interesting too, how you'll find certain ones in Roy, some in South Ogden. Obviously you're going to find them in Riverdale. But those are the ones that are high users to that facility. So if you look at that, even up north and, and even up in the valley, we've got people coming down from Eden that come down and use our facility. We had a fairly high number of Morgan users, which surprised me a little. Well, it shouldn't surprise me, but there, there were more coming down here than I thought there were. And then some of these other reports, that, that one I just wanted you to see. So if, if we're saying, is this a Riverdale City problem? This goes back to my comment that I made before. Shouldn't this be a county commission issue? Look at that. And, and Roy's not going to be much different, but go down, I don't know which pages, go to the next page, Michelle. There's a couple of these that, oh, this one was interesting. So this shows you where they came from. And where they went. So 60% of the people that use our facility came from home. And then they went, 55% went back to home. Now.
That was Roy, right? You're on Roy.
Oh, is that, okay. So yeah, look at that. Now look at where they go afterwards. To the Riverdale Park, back to their work, to Walmart or the Riverdale Town Center. But the thing that was surprising to me on that, look where they came from. 7-Eleven hit the list. I thought that, the 7-Eleven in Roy. Now why, everybody's leaving the 7-Eleven in Roy and coming down to our senior center for some odd reason. I don't know. I could see them coming from Walmart or the park or something, but why that 7-Eleven was on there, that was kind of interesting. Go down, I don't remember what else was on there. It's just interesting. Oh, there, there's the day of use. You can see Tuesdays and Thursdays are big. This probably isn't a huge surprise to Rich on that one. And Wednesdays aren't bad. Really all the days of the week are decent. The middle days. I'm trying to see what that one was. Oh, that's the time of use. And again, what, what do you think that is? What's the draw right there? That's a lunch. So there's, it's a no-brainer. That's what they're coming down here for is our lunch. This one was kind of fun too. This was. The favorite places. Again, if you look at those, I think this is where they were. Again, was this where they were going to afterwards? So you'll see Walmart, I would expect them to be on there. New Gate Mall, the, the interesting, the thing that I found about that is a lot of those people are leaving and going shopping. Surprising that a number of them would go down to Farmington Station, which is fairly far away. And even the junction and then the Roy Marketplace, but all the ones above that, besides the Leighton Hills Mall or, or Riverdale. Or near Riverdale, you got the New Gate Mall in there, but they are. Are, are places. Now, the population is not huge, but still it tells you a little bit about what their habits are on this. I don't go down, Michelle, I don't remember if there's much more. That's duration of the visit. That again, it's not real surprising. Again. A lot of that's going to be their time in, in, yeah, that was pretty much it. I just wanted to show that one map. Now we do have the other facilities. In fact, I broke those down a little bit between the three facilities that we did this study on. Now, interesting enough, and I don't know why, and we're working on this, but. We could not get the numbers on the terraces facility. Under that software program, for some reason it was blocked right there. So we're trying to acquire that, but we did pull. The Golden Hour Senior Center, which will be the middle one, that we suspect that they're going to pick up on that. And we pulled the Roy Senior Center and without getting into a lot of details, but if you looked at those. There's about 10 or 11 zip codes, primary zip codes around there. And if you looked at those of the 10 that we were listed that was on our sheet, we were either in first or second place as far as the total populations of people. In, in six of the 10 zip codes in Weber County. So that tells you these people, there's a lot of people coming into Riverdale. That's not just our zip code. There was five other zip codes out there that we were the first place. Spot on that. Roy was quite high and they were, they were first and second in almost every one of them and especially. Their resident population was huge. It was like 2.8 thousand, so 2,800 people. Are using the Roy facility each day. And then obviously they pick up a lot of the west side of, of the county and they pick up some of Davis County. Us and Roy are going to get the biggest hit on Davis Counties.
Real quick, Steve, on the Roy numbers?
Yeah.
It's important to understand. How down deep the software is, but the Roy Senior Center is connected to their city offices. And so I'm not sure if some of those, those numbers are being picked up. Not just senior center visits. Our facility is a standalone facility, so is Golden Hours. But like I would suspect that the terrace numbers, if you ever got them or the Roy numbers, where those buildings are kind of joint buildings, you might be getting some overlap of.
Yeah, it could be.
People, so their numbers might be skewed a little bit, so.
Definitely doesn't include the fire station.
And on the, the Golden Hours Senior Center, which is the downtown Ogden, which is the one they're going to keep, one of the, the three or the five. They were only in first place on two zip codes and that was 84403, which would be Ogden, which obviously that one would be, and Eden. Which again, that would make sense, but I thought that was kind of telling that us and Roy are carrying a heavy load for Weber County. And yet, you know. It's just, it's just mind-boggling to me. Now, we haven't shared these with DHS, but I think we will, just to kind of show them a little bit. Especially depending on what they do, just because I think it lends credence to our claim that we should be getting our fair share of the money because we're carrying a lot of the county right now.
A lot of people coming in. Hours on that one, Michelle. I noticed on Roy's that their busiest time isn't lunchtime because they get meals on wheels.
Yeah, because again, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah. Which is, which is interesting because I don't think that their, their programs are near what ours are. So I'm not sure what that draw is unless it's something that Rich is talking about, that they're there for other things or something.
I know it drops off a little bit, but that 4:00 PM, 5:00 PM, 6:00 PM, that is not seniors.
No, that's, they've got the, they've got the kids, the youth underneath it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hope Center.
That's why I'm saying is Roy's numbers.
Are, are different, yeah.
So inclusive of a lot of different programs, not just a senior program, whereas our numbers, I mean, you're not.
Are just seniors, yeah.
Their after-school program.
The Hulk Center's there, they do rentals in the evening.
Yes, and so that, you know, and I don't know that they could differentiate between somebody coming to the youth center. Or go upstairs to the senior center.
Right. I don't think so. That's, that's why I think the Roy's numbers are a little bit skewed.
Right, and they would be. The, the Golden Hours would be a little more accurate because I think that's just a senior center. And the terraces would be, I mean, they do share that with the fire department, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't mess up that much. It would still, tho- those would be a little bit more accurate to compare with us. Than Roy would be. But Roy again is quite a bit bigger than us too, and so their numbers are going to be bigger. You would expect them to be bigger, but. They were, they were about three times total. Usage numbers than, than ours were, but I think their populations, aren't they about 30,000? So.
Closer to 40.
See, so that would make sense just by the nature of the numbers that they have. But anyway, just some interesting details there. I thought those were pretty fascinating. But I do think it, it gives us a good claim to argue we, we should be getting some money from the county. Either that or we seriously look at considering just limiting and restricting it to Riverdale. Because we're paying for a lot of people out there that, that aren't our residents.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Brooks on this?
We will continue to beat this to death. We'll know on Friday if we're one of them. If we're not, then we, we'll go down those other paths and deal with it then, so.
Okay. All right. You're going to send those emails to the council?
Yes.
All right, cool. Thanks. All right, last thing, last action item number three, review of council rules and procedures. Mr. Brooks.
Uh, okay. So as I mentioned in the pre-planning meeting, our, our council rules and procedures, and these are, these are good. This is what, what we're supposed to use when we operate and do our meetings and. We want to make sure we keep current on that and that you guys are comfortable with them and you, and you want those and you like them. If we need to tweak them, let's tweak them, but. Under our own rules, it requires us to review these periodically, really every two years at a minimum. You could do it as often as you want, but. I put those in there. Now, the one that's changed since, just since January, since we used this last. If you recall, in that meeting, we used that. At that time, the mayor broke a tie in the second vote, in the second vote for the replacement. And the mayor could or didn't have to exercise that, but he had that option. They've taken that out just since January. So it was in this most recent legislative session. That is no longer in there. So you go back to another coin toss. So that is one change we have to make because it's under city code. My thought was where they keep playing with this thing, I don't know why this is such a hot potato. I don't think it's that big of a deal. But I just want to put it in there and just say, we will follow Utah Code Annotated, whatever it is, 20A1, 201 or 101, whatever it is. And just leave it at that or the equivalent of that because we, I don't know how many times we've changed this and this is the one we always change. We put it in there for clarifications, but if they're going to keep changing it. Let's just refer to their code. So that section is towards the very end of ours, like section 93 or something like that. So that's the verbiage that I'll bring in, in the next meeting. But if you guys could get through that, I don't know if any of you had a chance to read it, if you had any comments you wanted to make. But, but please look through it and, and if you have some of those concerns or changes or clarifications. Let me know and then I'll bring another proposal back that'll be in more of a finalized draft and, and we'll clean those up and they'll be ready to go again. And I think it's, it's, it's a little unfair to ask the most recent council members to come in in January and do this because they don't. It's like the fire hose stuff we gave you back in January and February. The last thing you want to worry about is these, but I think you'd probably be pretty comfortable with this stuff now because you've been using it. We've been doing it. So now would be a good time to look at it and, you know, within the next couple of weeks or the next month, I'll bring a final proposal back with some changes and, and more of a finalized format. Maybe nothing but that one change, but if you have some other stuff, let me know. Any questions or comments on that?
Discussion, Councilor Hanson.
I was reviewing it and I, in section six, number four. It mentions that will be provided a monthly copy of the current treasurer's report and the year-to-date budget. I don't think we've seen that for a little while, and so I just wanted to point it out that I think that would be really great if we could get that. On a monthly basis, whether it's in the packet or even just emailed and maybe that's the verbiage we need to change if we're not comfortable. Having it in the packet once a month, but it would be helpful information for us.
Okay.
That's a great point. And just, just so everybody knows, if there is something you would like to see in the packets. Let the city know, like I'm sure they'd be willing to, you know, we want to always be as transparent with everybody, especially you guys as you're looking at it, but. It's all public record and if you feel like there's something that should be in there that's going to make you more able to make decisions, just let us know. We'd be happy to put it in there.
Yeah, just like the fire report that we just did recently, I think those are better. I think they explain things a little bit better and a little more clear. I still think I want them better than what they are, but we're making improvement.
They went backwards a little bit this time, but. We, we, we'll, we'll have something new to work with.
Yeah.
I did have.
Councilor Hawes.
In. 1.2. G. Council members could be expelled by two-thirds majority vote for acts for cause. Just want to clarify that that's from a meeting.
It's from what?
From a meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we can't kick people off the council. Unfortunately. Well, fortunately for me. And then the other one. I personally hate the state's website. And for public notice, and it, it actually says in here that the. Agenda will be. Posted by the city recorder on the state's public notice website in accordance with Utah Open Meetings Act and on the city's official website. I know that the city has a link to the state's website. And I'm sure that is what the expectation is, but like I says, I hate looking for things on the city's website. Or I mean, on the state website, it, I can never seem to find. Things that I'm, you know, if I, if I'm looking for a particular. Some, a particular item that I'm pretty sure showed up in a, in a. Council meeting. The, the state's website is just horrible to try to find that kind of stuff. I don't know whether it, I, I mean. My next thing is just, you know. Oh, I'll contact Ms. Margony. That's, that's probably the easiest thing. But.
I have a hard time finding stuff on there too. I'm not logged in administratively. It's like, not good.
It's, it's not a great system, but I, that was a, those two things were the. Things that I noticed. So.
Anything else?
Uh, sorry, just one second. I was thinking, so Councilor Hawes, do we know exactly what Councilor Hawes wants? Or do you understand that clearly?
I, I think if I understood correctly, you just want to make sure that our website's good and clear and easier than the state's website is kind of how I took that.
Yeah, I don't think that we post ours, post the stuff in, on our. Website at all.
We just have a link.
We just have a link.
Yeah, the agenda is linked. And then we post the public hearing notices and those kind of things on there, but.
Um, I, so I, I would. At, at a minimum, I would ask that we post the agenda. Specifically on, on our website, a, a link to. You know. I don't know if it, if maybe you can do it through like on the calendar. Where it says, you know, in, in the calendar thing, each time the, that we get a new agenda, that you create a link in the calendar or. Or somehow just so that at least the, the. The agenda is easily accessible on the city's website.
I've seen where some cities do exactly that. So they'll have two columns and one will be their notice and the other one will be their packet. And so that wouldn't be a huge change or a bunch more work for us. Once we had it set up. Because Michelle's posting that stuff anyway, so it'd be easier for her to just throw one in here and one in the other. So that was my thought when you said that is maybe we go down that path because I think that would simplify it and still make it accessible to people. So we'll, we'll talk about that and beat it up a little bit.
Okay. Councilor Richter, thank you.
Yeah, um, at, at the most recent training at the League of Cities and Towns, it, it clear that, that Riverdale's a bit of an outlier on 6.3 and that's public comment. During city council meetings. Most have some limited. Public comment, meaning restricted to those items that are on the agenda. Certainly not the intent to limit overall input from citizens, but for the council to be able to exercise some control over. Over the topics that are, that are brought up or the amount of time that is, that was spent on that. So. Maybe for consideration. Something on there that would, that would limit the, the comments, public comments to items on the agenda or related topics. Or, and we could even use the word may. We may limit that. So in other words, if there's an outlier, one or two comments here and there. But if it gets out of control, the mayor may limit further comments to those things on, on that. So just a point of discussion or perhaps consideration.
I, I don't have a problem with that, especially with the words may. The code, I'd have to go look at it. I haven't looked at it for a few years, but it. Used to specifically say that they could bring other stuff up. So the code says that they can't. You guys just can't. And, and then we wouldn't want to talk a whole lot about it, but they can bring it up and then you can respond back to it. But again, we wouldn't want to get into a lot of detail. And so I wouldn't want to step outside of that, but with the verbiage may. Like if we had a night that was just specific, like let's say we had a mobile home park deal again, where we knew the bulk of that meeting was just going to be that, that might be. where we knew the bulk of that meeting was just gonna be that, that might be an occasion where we could exercise that and say, let's just keep it to that and leave it at that for now. So I'm okay with that that aspect. I think we could rewrite that if you feel comfortable with that, Mike.
I think it's interesting there were an outlier. I didn't I didn't realize that, because I encourage people, if you have any anything to say, just come on in, you know.
Yeah, and I don't think we've had any specific problems, at least not that I'm aware of. It it's just more an effort um to make sure that could, because there's a lot of instances where those meetings have been taken over.
Yeah, the may, I I like that. I I think it would give us a little bit.
Well, and and the mayor has authority to restrict that, too, at the start of the meeting and limit that. I know, and Annie would probably be familiar with that. There's a an individual up in Boxer County who likes to come into all meetings, whether she lives there, or I shouldn't say she, this individual. She knows who I'm talking about. Um, in in fairness to her, she does a really, really good job, and she's concerned about a lot of things, and she's very uh versed and knowledgeable about a lot of stuff. And she brings in issues and and raises those. Well, the county commission a few years ago tried to cut that out, and that didn't go over well. And now they've got it back in there. So you want to be a little bit careful with that. People expect to be able to talk to their their elected officials. And so we'll we'll look at it.
I I like the the may aspect of it because it's not like we have an overwhelming number of people coming to our meetings to talk to us. So we don't want to make it sound like we don't want them to come.
But we do need to be careful about First Amendment rights, and so that's where the may is good. But as long as the code supports it, because that's where it gets a little sketchy, and that's why you can restrict it, but we just have to be super careful about the First Amendment stuff, so. I think it's good if we look into it.
Council, okay, anybody else? Okay. All right, got a few things to work on there, Mr. Brooks?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we will move on to the comments section of our meeting. Uh, first, city council, any comments from the city council? Councilor Hawes?
Um, I grew up in Lehigh and uh they and so I follow a couple of their Facebook uh pages, and on Saturday, they opened a new park. They called the they call it the fam- family park. And they have spent a lot of money on it. It is an all abilities um park. It has a splash pad. It has a number of amenities, just really nice. Um, there's a fence around it with gates that are locked at night, and um it's not open on Sundays at the moment. They staff it. They have when it's open, they have somebody there to, I I'm not sure exactly what it is. Um, they opened it on Saturday and had a great big, huge uh grand opening for it, and then, you know, at night, they closed it, and on somebody on Sunday, somebody broke in, broke the locks on the gate, and um with with bikes and scooters and different things create a whole bunch of damage on it that they now have to fix. And I I I know that there there had been talk about, you know, uh all ability parks and, you know, making things really nice, and it was just really disappointing to, you know, the the first thing that everybody on the page was saying was, why is it closed on Sunday? And then the city came back and said, well, yeah, it was closed on Sunday, and people broke in and vandalized the park. And now we have to spend more money to fix it. I just thought that was just really disappointing that a city would, you know, put forward that much effort, because it it really was a pretty expense, one of the most expensive parks that they've ever um made. And uh I know that our parks, we're, you know, we're doing a number of different things in, you know, looking at remodeling the playgrounds on the parks, and I think that we do, I think Riverdale does a great job in in that, and I know that uh just the the that swing that was put in for uh handicapped kids, for disabled kids, was very well um rece- received, and um I know that it's probably abused more than it probably should be. Um, but I think that uh it's, you know, it's sad that they would, you know, the it's almost like they would have to have police officers patrolling all the time to keep um things nice, and uh I think that luckily we don't have too much problems with that. Uh, and I thank the city staff and the police officers that enforce the things and and what what Rich has brought to us tonight um to make to make sure that we keep our facilities, our parks and stuff nice for our citizens. Um, so I just I just thought when I when I saw that, it was just heartbreaking that a city would put that much effort into um into a nice, super nice park, and the day after the grand opening, it got vandalized.
Anybody else? Okay.
Mayor, I have a couple things.
All right, Councilor Arnold?
Um, one, if uh on the twenty acres behind Sam's Club, and I know um I don't know how much we want to establish this, but maybe UMA could uh do some improvements there for a football field. As long as the city owns it and we're not doing anything, I know we talked about doing letting somebody do improvements on a soccer field on our uh park property that we talked about, but maybe UMA could look at that if they're interested. And the second thing, well, I I'd like to have somebody second me on an agenda item. Uh, I think um I'd like to see the planning commission get paid. That's maybe like two hundred and fifty dollars a month or something like that, but just just something. That's would like to to see that. They, right now, I think they get fifty bucks or seventy-five bucks or something like that. And I'd like to see him get like at least two hundred and fifty.
Okay. Uh, do we have someone that would like to uh be a second for Councilor Arnold to put that on a future agenda?
I will.
Councilor Hanson, okay. We can put that discussion on a future agenda. Is that all you need? What's that?
On both of those?
Both both uh, yeah, do you want to have that as a discussion on the park property, too, Councilor Arnold?
On on the park property, I I think uh Steve might need to look at that, um because once they do improvements, how much uh how many rights do they get? You know, because I mean, they go in and establish something and and then we sell it or something. So before we put it on the agenda, I think legally, we might want to look at
Yeah, yeah, we'll look at it before we put that on the agenda, because there could be some costs, big costs on that, because we wouldn't have any water in there right now besides uh sod. There there could be a lot of stuff, but we we'll look at it.
So he can he can look into that a little bit before we put that on our agenda, so that will be good, and then kind of let us know what you found.
And even if we mention it to them, they might not be interested at all.
True.
Might might not have the funds or the ambition.
On the compensation, can Stacy pull from that program to get like a market range like she does for us?
Yeah, that's what we'd probably do first, see what other cities are doing and stuff and see where they're at.
And then that brings up the question of, you know, are the employees? Because as it is now, they're getting stipend, so it's a ten ninety-nine as opposed to a W two. So does that make them a an employee?
And that's all stuff that can be discussed, or but that's good points for them to look into. Um, you'll you'll just need to have a discussion, Mr. Brooks, with Stacy, and and then you could present that stuff to us.
Okay.
I think we will probably end up with it on an agenda, so you could kind of let us know what you found. Anything else, Councilor Arnold?
Nope. Thanks, Annie. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Okay. Any comments from the city staff?
We have nothing further, Mayor.
Okay. Um, I had just a couple of real quick things. Uh, there was a service project on September seventh. Our code enforcement played a big role in that. Um, hopefully, somebody saw in your neighborhood some stuff going on. They accomplished a great deal. Um, I'll be interested to hear from uh our code enforcement officer and see what he thinks. Um, the projects I saw, I mean, the dumpster was overflowing that they brought in, so I think that's just great. So tell him thanks um for all he did in putting that together. Um, on the subject of an all abilities apart a park, uh I will let you know that I had a meeting with uh Riverdale Elementary this week. They are interested in doing a small version of an all abilities park, um possibly on the concrete area between the the tennis courts and the playground that's there. Um, there are a couple of basketball standards, but they don't get used much. The kids use the ones on the asphalt with the lines on them. Um, apparently, there's a foundation that would foot the whole bill for it. Um, and I was encouraged to talk to Councilor Hanson, because she knows a lot about those surfaces and stuff, and and it's it it's in the very infant stages. Um, there's a lot of problems with the possible park there. Um, but but if they're willing to fund it, it's something that we're we're looking at just a little bit. So just so you're in the loop on that. Um, we have a gentleman that's interested in um possibly painting some murals in the city. He lives in Roy. Uh, he said maybe areas that get vandalized. He asked for some suggestions. I told him maybe under the uh under the eighty-four overpass on ten fifty west and possibly under the uh Riverdale Road overpass going over the trail, and he said he's never painted anything. He went and looked at them. Never painted anything on a sloped area like that, but he said he was interested. So um just think about that. Um, if if it's something you might want, uh if you have strong feelings either way on murals, um I'm not sure I I'm not sure how I feel about it, to be honest, but uh but he is interested in doing it. Um, and so that would I would the city council have to approve something like that, or?
I we probably should, just because they may not even want it done, and it's it is city property, so.
It could probably be UDOT under the.
Would it be UDOT?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're already doing that down by your house. They're already doing murals down there.
Cities, so we don't have to meet the artwork requirement that the bigger cities have to do, where they have the murals and you know, they cover their utility boxes and stuff like that. Do we not have to comply with whatever that is?
I don't know. I I'm really not sure.
Okay.
They're they're funny with, because we've been fighting with them on this bridge, these murals on those bridges. That's artwork, but they're not letting anything happen anymore.
Yeah, on forty-four hundred, they don't want us to replace our metal art when they expand forty-four hundred, you know. So I don't know. We'll see, but okay, that's good. Uh, just so you know, kind of things that are going on. Um, we'll keep working. If we need to talk to UDOT or whatever, we'll let him know. But uh, okay, that's about all I have, so uh seeing nothing else, uh we need the most.
Just ask a quick question.
Yeah.
On forty-four hundred and Parker, there's a roundabout, and there's um Lions Club Park. And there's a fence there. Is that fence owned by UDOT?
There's a little little piece of ground that comes right there, and it curves like almost right into forty-four hundred, and that is UDOT. I think at one point in time, they looked at that as a probably an off-ramp, but I don't think they even know it's there, to be honest with you. But it's right along that park. That's what you're talking about.
Because there's campaign signs hung on that fence.
Seen that.
And and I'm I'm wondering, you know, if that's on city property, that's a no-go.
And and I've met with Casey on this. I don't think that is, but we'll follow up on that, because I'm I'm betting that's probably on that uh UDOT piece, just like the other side of Parker is, and that's why they hit those so heavy is because it's UDOT.
Okay, that's all.
But we'll we'll follow up, and I saw that just today, Bart. I drove by there, and there's it's just wall-to-wall signs right there, so. We've got a number of them. Um, Steve's been gone. He's back in town now, but there's a number of signs we've got to get out and clean up. It's kind of you know, you feel bad when somebody loses their dog, but uh boy, it looks junky when you got, God, there's like twenty thousand of those things out there.
They don't, two weeks later, they haven't, you know.
No, they haven't taken them down.
No.
And and those, you know, we have a code that says you can't use city signs for that purpose, and a lot of those are city signs. Some of them are private, but a lot of them are city. And I'm sure they didn't get permission from the landowners even on the private ones, so. But yeah, we'll be that it just kind of comes in political season. We get a lot of signs. They see the political signs, and then they throw everything else in there, too, so. Again, we got to be careful on what's free speech, what's not, and all that kind of stuff, but uh it's we're juggling constantly.
Well, I didn't think that it was legal to put even political signs on the um on.
Not on city property.
On state property.
Well, I, you know, I'm not even sure, but it's not, it wouldn't be us that enforces it, so.
Because, yeah, because I
It is great.
Yeah.
Called UDOT when I was running back when I ran, and they referred me to the Lady Bird Johnson beautification act of nineteen sixty-something.
Yeah, I would be surprised that it is legal.
Severely restricts what can be put on, especially along um the fences along uh interstate highways. That's the Lady Bird Johnson thing is really restrictive on the interstate highway system uh right-ofways.
But UDOT really doesn't have an enforcement body, so who's gonna enforce it, you know? They're gonna have to use the counties. And uh you're not gonna get very far with that one, so it'd be, they'd have to give cities or local jurisdictions some authority to to enforce that. I don't know that we want to get into that mess. It's bad enough as it is with our stuff, but we'll we'll look at things.
I know I know that when I was on the council before, that there was uh there was a guy who was suing all the cities for political sign restrictions, because um and I think our city had some kind of thing that restricted even political signs um to a certain period before and after the election and a number of different things, and uh the basically the he was suing on free speech rights, and he was just going in and filing, had had a lawyer who would file a lawsuit and sue for um for costs, and so the lawyer was being paid, and every city was settling and paying the lawyer. And I was like, we should change our law.
And we did. I don't think we have any restrictions anymore on two months before or.
Well, that was that was where if there's a primary, you had to, after the primary, then you had to pull them off because you couldn't put out for the general until like September.
I think that's a state law on signs now.
I think there probably is a little bit of nervousness about free speech stuff, like I think you'd want to be careful about getting too involved with that. All right, um if there's nothing else, we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion?
Agreed.
Well, three motions. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, one second, second. All in favor, say yes.
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 All right, we're adjourned.
I'm not sure which motion I seconded.
All three, I assume.